We're live. I'll call the June 3rd City Council meeting to order. Call of the roll.
John Hawkins?
Here.
Matt McKinney?
Here.
Brian Miller? Jim Talbot?
Here.
Logan Welch?
Here.
Call for motion to approve the agenda?
All moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next section is A, petitions, communications and requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting, but city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have anything? Oh, come up to the podium. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm Jesse Iverson, I live out on 213 Edgewood Drive. I got a couple of questions on this pud that was out there. And at one time we were told, which I believe we lost, to the zoning two to pud because we were told the streets were going to be built first. And so far, all I can see is the apartments are getting done faster than the streets are going to be done. So I'd just like to know why? Why would we lie to you? Because that's why we lost, because the streets were going to be built first. And then I just want to know why?
I don't, I don't remember us saying that we're, that we're going to build the streets first, but...
I do, because we lost. Logan, what was that, two weeks ago? I was down there and asked you and you reminded me what you told me. You asked him if the streets were going to be built first. But you also told me you couldn't remember what his response was. Isn't that not correct? Zach, you were there. I asked to talk to you after the city council meeting. And that's what he said. But us six that came up here to talk know exactly what was said. And that's why we knew we lost, because he said the streets were going to be built first. There's no recording. There's no filming. Something broke, is what I was said. So I'm just asking you, why aren't the streets going to be built?
The streets were going to be built.
Right. I think we're, I think we're kind of splitting hairs on semantics because the, the, the streets have to be built for them to, to get a lot, their large chunk of their funding for this project. I, I don't see them walking away from the street building because that would be a, a huge loss.
That's okay. You're, you're telling them they're going to lose 2.7 million.
I'm not sure the exact number, but it's...
What's, you know the number better than me?
It's right around 2 million.
Yeah, so that, that is contingent on the streets being built in this...
Only on the streets.
Right. So, so that's why I think we're kind of being semantics, like what comes first? If, if, if it's a matter of like order of construction or, you know, whatever it is, and, and if it was somehow miscommunicated, the, the streets aren't really even necessary until the traffic's there.
But didn't you ask them?
I did ask them because I wondered, I wondered where the construction equipment would come in on new streets or through yours. And that was the only reason I asked.
I know. And he said the streets were going to be built first.
And, and if that's, if that's the answer you gave, then so be it. But the, the, the pud is not contingent on...
And you're probably right.
What is, what is contingent is, is that, is the, the, the tip money. And, and, and that's the contingency on where the street's going or not.
So if anything with this pud, any lives, anything's changed, it goes back to zoning two, correct?
Or goes back to the council as a other pud.
So how are you going to change something when he's got a three-story building already built?
Well, we have a, we have a, a over $2 million hedged bet that he'll build the streets. And, and that's, and that's why we feel comfortable with it allowing the three stories to go up right now is because we know any developer that already put, put infrastructure in the ground for future streets wouldn't walk away now when that check's dangling in front of them.
So you're going to guarantee me the streets are going to be built? And if they're not before these apartments, or even if the apartment's done, because apartment's going to be done, they're all going to come out on Edgewood Drive. What I can see with the problem you have down at the end at Bicentennial with the water problem, he ain't going to get that street built. He's going to build that first one going right around, uh, to the apartment and back out on Edgewood Drive. And that's not what we wanted. We wanted people to go away from Edgewood Drive and take the new street around the other direction. But I don't think it's going to happen.
I learned a long time ago not to guarantee anything. Uh, it's not my money at play, it's the developers.
Who is the developer now? Can you tell us?
Well...
Because I don't think Dave Walters is in it no more, is he?
Dave, Dave Walters, I believe is still involved, but he was more of a middleman with, with...
Is he still involved?
Yes. So I under, I understand this has been a, a headache for the neighborhood and I totally get where you're coming from.
I know.
And I, and I totally, I totally get to where you kind of see where the, the, the tides turned a little bit when, when they, they were making some kind of concessions or some good faith promises in those meetings to the neighborhood when questions like that were answered and you're like, okay. And then certain boards and, and committees suggested because maybe some tides have turned during that conversation. I, I think the pud would have went through regardless though, whether the streets are built first or second or third, because we were supportive of, of that type of growth.
Carla, Carla Dewey?
Are you supportive because of the type of growth? Or was it more the street's going to have another second exit out of Bicentennial?
We, we, we were different about the, the, the street exit. The, the, I mean, it's not necessary until there's something built in that, that land, so...
Can I ask you something? Every one of you. You've been by there. We wanted them to move the apartments back, kept it as two-story and looked a lot better. You drive down there right now and you look, even drive down the interstate and look. I have not heard one person in this town thinks that looks nice. Now you voted for it, you think it looks nice?
Is it finished?
I don't care if it is.
Then it's a little hard to say what it's going to look like.
Okay, you all come back when this finishes, John. Because, John, once before you told me I lost 25% value because of my fence I put up. Isn't that not what you told me?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I've lost a lot more than 25% because I can turn my fence down. And they're going to tear that freaking three-story building down?
Cheers, and I'll, I'll, I'll answer this, honestly as I can. And this is truthfully what I see in that apartment building. When, when I see development going on off of the, off the side of an interstate, and I travel all over the state, all over the Midwestern, like when I pass a community or an off-ramp and I see construction and I see activity, I see hope and I see growth. So when I come home and I head to my off-ramp and I see construction going on both sides of it, I see hope and I see growth. It looks like a bunch of plywood and sticks right now, but that says we're growing. And that's what we work for here on the council. So I think it looks gorgeous. I know it doesn't look gorgeous out of your front window, but the way I see things is skewed from yours. And that's how I see it.
Carla, is, um, do we have any gap? You know, we don't have to give occupancy if they don't finish the rest of the subdivision, do we? We don't have to give occupancy to the building if they don't finish the sub, finish the subdivision.
Can I get the plans and specs of the pud out there? Because there's got to be something wrote up. There's got to be something you follow. And I'd like to know if I can have a copy of the plan and specs.
That's public record, right? Yeah, that shouldn't be an issue.
So I should be able to get it?
Yeah.
Just got to make requests and you can get it.
Okay. I'll do that then and we'll see what happens because if anything changes, then it's falsely goes back to zoning two, right?
No, it's...
Not, no, we go back to vote.
It can come back to us to vote.
All right, that's all I have to say. I'm just curious.
I appreciate your time. Great questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other public? Anybody else have anything? I have a couple of proclamations. I might do, I'll do the garden club, one of you will come up. You might as well come up, you come into town and see us. So we have, it's, you know, the, we do that proclamation, we read it already on the, the week that they laid the, laid the plants out in town and beautified our, our downtown again for one more year. But, um, it's National Garden Clubs Incorporated, National Garden Week proclamation. Whereas gardeners have a, have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, care of plants and riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance and nutrition to our lives through growing herbs, vegetables, foliage and flowers. And whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit and independence and initiative through innovative and hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, and share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity to our citizens, for those just learning as well as those having years of experience. And whereas gardeners promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardeners enables members of the garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a world of difference in their communities where they reside and work. Now therefore, be it resolved that in an effort to acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of gardeners, National Garden Clubs Incorporated designates week of June 2nd to 8th, 2019 is National Garden Week. But be it further resolved by the mayor and the members of the city council that June 2nd to the 9th is a, is Garden Week in Webster City, Iowa. Thank you, John. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for all the plants you've already planted. Main street looks pretty good, it's better.
Do we want to do the public hearings now?
No, I bet we'll have to read the next one.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Item one, general agenda. Item one on the agenda is a public hearing at 6:05. Item one A on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed rezoning of property from Highway C3, from, from C3 Highway Business District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District. Said property being located along Superior Street and Edgewood Drive, Webster City, Iowa. I will open the hearing. Are there any oral objections?
Written.
Well, written objections?
No written objections.
Are there any oral objections?
No oral objections?
We lost everybody.
Yeah.
I figured...
I'll call on Carla.
If we didn't lose somebody, we might have had an oral objection.
Close the hearing first.
Yep, we'll close the hearing. Carla?
Mommy?
It's all you.
Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission has initiated these next three public hearings on merit by looking at updating our comprehensive plan. When we update the comprehensive plan, we look at the zoning map, the existing land use map, the future land use map, everything that is contained in the comprehensive plan. And this time they started with the zoning map. They have not gotten through it yet, so these aren't the only three. But they did have four, the areas that they were looking at. We withdrew one, decided not to, to change it. And then these three are the ones that they wanted hearing except for. The first hearing now is the rezoning of property from C3 to R1. C3 is Highway Business, R1 is Single Family Dwelling District. This would include four properties to the west and north of the intersection of Edgewood and Superior Street up on the hill. All of the property owners have been notified and no one has objected. One called for clarification and we gave it to them. Everybody's fine with it. C3 allows any business in there. And it's very obvious that it is a residential district. And so to put them in a residential district instead of commercial makes sense. And this is where the P and Z was coming into it as far as making it contiguous with what's already on Edgewood is R1.
Okay.
Any questions?
Nope. Do you want to do them one at a time?
Let's do that.
No, yeah, rather than have to explain the rest.
First reading of this ordinance and then we'll go on to...
You just want to wait there, Carla, more.
Well, it's, it's great to see, you know, planning and zoning, digging into this and kind of cleaning stuff up. It's awesome, you know? If we didn't have that board kind of going and you're, we're going through it with a comb, there, there do arise these little inconsistencies that just don't make sense, so it's great.
Uses change over the years.
Sure, yeah, yeah, it is.
Things change.
Okay. So I call for a motion on the first reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Webster City as provided by section 121.06 of the Code of Ordinances of Webster City, Iowa of 1996 by rezoning property from C, C3 Highway Business to District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District. Said property being located along Superior Street and Edgewood Drive in Webster City, Iowa.
All moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item one B on the agenda is a public hearing on proposed rezoning of a property from A1 Agriculture District to C3 Highway Business District. Said property being located along East 2nd Street, Webster City, Iowa. I will open the hearing. Are there any written objections?
Received no written objections.
Are there any oral objections?
No oral objections.
I'll close the hearing. Carla?
On this particular area, all of the targeted parcels are zoned, C3 on the front half, but A1 on the back half. When P and Z looked at it, they thought that maybe they would just as soon have their lot in one zone. And so that's why they targeted this area. I did talk to the property owners of the Far West Lot and they have horses in a barn up at the top of that hill there. And his question was, can we still have our horses? Yes, it doesn't change because he would come in as a non-conforming use when we would rezone it to C. However, if he went to sell it, they, whoever the new buyer would have to use it as a, what it is now being used for, or if it sat vacant for a year, then it has to resort back to the original use in a C3. So for that reason, he would like to have his withdrawn from that property. And I said, we're not forcing anybody to do this. If he's not happy with it, that's fine. But P and Z just thought cleaning it up and making it all one zone would be easier. But if he wants to secure it the way it is, that's fine.
So, so it could possibly affect the value of his property because...
No, it will not affect the value. None of this affects value of property.
I, I, okay.
It affects the usage.
Sure, sure. And, and I guess that means like maybe like perceived value. If someone could, I could own horses in town, but if someone were to move in there, they would have to immediately put horses in that facility.
Because right, if we change it, then it's a non-conforming use. It becomes a non-conform use. And if he wants to leave it to make sure that it stays the way it is, that's fine. But the others, if they want to go commercial all the way back to their rear lot life, they can. Whereas if it stays A1, they can't.
I got you. Call for a motion on the first reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Webster City provided by section 121.06 of the Code of Ordinances of Webster City, Iowa, 1996 by rezoning property A1 Agriculture District to C3 Highway Business District. Said property being located along East 2nd Street, Webster City, Iowa.
I do have a question. Do we need to approve first reading with that change then?
Yes. And I will just give you a new legal description.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll move to approve with the, with the stated amendment from Carla.
Hold on a second.
That's basically the first property west of the... Really not, yeah.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those, same sign.
Changes.
Motion approved. Item one C on the agenda is a public hearing on proposed rezoning of property from R2 Multiple Family Dwelling District to M1 Light Industrial District to C3 Highway Business District. Said property being located along James Street and Prospect Street, Webster City, Iowa. I will open the hearing. Are there any written objections?
Received no written objections.
Are there any oral objections?
No oral objections.
I'll close the hearing. Carla?
Okay, this parcel would be immediately north of Hy-Vee. Hy-Vee sits in a, a commercial district. And so as long as it's contiguous with something, it can be rezoned to what that is. Right now it's in an R2 and M1. There's two different uses back there along the railroad tracks, I think it is. Yeah, the tracks are to the south of it, between Hy-Vee and them. We would just as soon keep the, the whole, the whole rectangular shape there, which involves two ownerships, and keep that to be the commercial district. Number one, it's kind of twofold. Number one, it will open up more opportunities for the building that is already being used for an office space. Used to be the Union Hall. And then they've remodeled it and, and...
Public Health used to be there, yeah.
Thank you. Is there now. And we all know they're moving out to the old Sohigh Clinic, so that will open up opportunities for the sale of that building. And then the other building that they've been here for a nuisance, it will prohibit them from doing outdoor storage. They'll have to keep everything indoors and we won't, and we've already talked to them, they're fine with it. And it gives them a reason to keep everything inside because they can get served with another nuisance for outdoor storage. So you can't have outdoor storage in a C3. So it's kind of a win-win. Both parties have been talked to again and they both know that taxes, it doesn't affect taxes any for them because the use is basically staying the same. So they, they were, they were fine with it.
Okay. Thanks, Carla. I call for a motion on the first reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance amending the official zoning map of city Webster City as provided by section 121.06 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Webster City, Iowa, 1996 by rezoning property from R2 Multiple Family Dwelling District and M1 Light Industrial District to C3 Highway Business District. Said property being located along James Street and Prospect Street, Webster City, Iowa. Move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. I'll go back and do proclamation for Webster City Community Beautification Month for June 2019. The yard cleanup, house painting, restoration and business dress-up. Whereas the quality of life in a community is often exemplified by the physical beauty of that community. And whereas the physical appearance of the neighborhood business and community are examples of pride in our community. And whereas there are several lawns, shrubs, household and business exteriors that are in need of cleanup and improvement. And whereas we as residents and business owners of, would like to have improved property valuations. And whereas the prosperity of that, of a community is an important element of the growth and the population expansion. And whereas various elements of Webster City community, including civic groups, business community, neighborhood groups, have demonstrated a willingness to work together to enhance and the beauty of the city through a variety of endeavors. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and members of the city council that month of June 2019 be proclaimed as Webster City Community Beautification Month for June of 2019, yard cleanup, house painting, restoration and business dress-up. In the city of Webster City and that all citizens be encouraged to preserve this month as an opportunity to come together as friends and neighbors and as a community to beautify the city and through such projects to enhance community pride and quality of life. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby commends those citizens, neighborhoods and city organizations who undertake beautification initiatives during this Webster City Beautification Month. Community Beautification Month. Be it further resolved that the annual cleanup drop-off event will be held from June 4th, on June 14th from 12 noon to 4 p.m. And on June 15th from 8 a.m. till 2 p.m. at the middle school parking lot. Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to our item B, minutes and claims. The following items have been deemed uncontroversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. I have item one, this minutes of the May 20th and, uh, May 29th, session one, and May 29th, session two, 2019. Two is a resolution on payroll for the period ending May 25th and paid on June 7th, 2019. And item three is a resolution on bills and a fund list.
I'll move to approve one, two and three collectively.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. Item two is a resolution providing for notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications and proposed form of contract and estimate of costs for the 2019 Water Main Repair Project for July 15th at 6:05 p.m.
Matt's here if you have any questions.
You have any questions for Matt on this?
This is just setting the public hearing for that.
Really self-explanatory. Do you have any que...
Thanks for being here, though.
Thanks, Matt. I'll move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those, same sign. Motion approved. What do you want to do with this? Oh, this is the beer license, it's all right. Item three is a recommended approval issuance of beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. A is renewal of a Class E liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit, Sunday sales for Hy-Vee 823 Second Street. Item B is a renewal of a Class A liquor license and outdoor sales of the American Legion Post at 191 at 726 Second Street. C is a renewal of a Class B beer permit, Class C native wine permit and Sunday sales for Leon Pizza at 643 Second Street. Item D is a renewal of a Class E liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit and Sunday sales for Yes, Yes Way Store, number 10021 at 1102 Second Street. Item E is renewal of a Class E liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit and Sunday sales for Yes... Item E is renewal of a class E liquor license, class B wine permit, class C beer permit and Sunday sales for Yes Way Store number one hundred and eighteen at eighteen oh three Superior Street. Uh, item F is renewal of a class C liquor license and Sunday sales at Meter's Mexican Restaurant at five hundred Second Street. And item G is an upgrade to, of license to add class E liquor license and class B wine permit along with initial privileges approved by the class C beer permit and Sunday sales for Casey's General Store, number eighteen twenty-eight at thirteen hundred Second Street.
One question, and uh Carol's already clarified it. Under item B for the American Legion, seven twenty-six Second Street. And I talked to Carol because she got the new building next door, so it's still seven twenty-six for both doors, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted that to public record so everybody would know.
Would the Legion have both uh facilities in operation, like downstairs and upstairs?
No.
No, just one, right?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if they're gonna keep them both going or just get all moved upstairs?
Too many old people, they can't walk down the steps. Then get down, they can't get up. Okay, thank, I just wanted that to public record because.
You'd think after painkillers you'd be able to get back up. And if you're painful, you might get back up. Just getting down is a hard fight.
Local out there.
I, I move to approve uh A through G collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item four on the agenda is appointment of one member to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission for a four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um, where is my list?
Well, the, the good thing is this year we had uh many applicants and, and even some uh incumbents, you know, still fighting for their old position on, on their respective board or commission. Um, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, but uh the specific one, um, the parks and rec, like we have two appointments, is that correct?
Two vacancies.
Two vacancies, sorry, yeah. Um, we had four applicants. And what I'd suggest for four and five is that we, we bring in the incumbents back just because of what they have going on right now with some, some high level projects and some stuff that's been motioned for over a year or two. Um, and hopefully find homes later down the appointments for a couple of the other applicants for that board. So for this specific one, I'd recommend we appoint Allison Appel to uh uh fill her seat moving forward. But I'm open to other suggestions.
So you're talking incumbent for number four and.
And then Zuemi for number five.
You'll have to keep, take them separate.
Yeah.
I just thought it'd be easy to keep track of if we did them.
And I'm not pulling any favoritism, but I'm just going alphabetically here, so sorry Zuemi. But I'm, I'm suggesting Allison.
The incumbents uh, uh, across the board would be reelected.
My grand plan would be, so, but I'm just, yeah.
I'll second your motion to rip Allison.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Uh, Allison's, no, okay. Item five is appointment of one member of the Park and Rec Advisory Commission for a four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending at May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
So again, kind of like I mentioned before.
So you wanted to?
I would like to see Zuemi, the other incumbent, um, that also reapplied uh back on the board. They're doing great work. I, Kent's not here today for, for personal reasons, but um I think you'd agree that they got a lot going on and they're both doing great, so.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item six is appointment of.
What's that? Uh, Zuemi Rio Sosa? Or is it Calis Rio Sosa?
Yes.
It's hyphenated, I apologize.
Reassessor. I've got a copy here for the names when you're finished.
Up there, I believe. I don't know if the full name's up there or not, but.
I'll give you my copy, then you'll be having more. Um, item six is, is an appointment of one member to the airport commission for the four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And once again, I guess you, you have an incumbent here again, so.
For this one, I'd suggest the incumbent as well. The incumbent's actually the sitting chairperson, even though the other applicant is great and, and seasoned in airport knowledge above my head. Right, I, I think I have an idea of where another good seat for him would be. So yeah, again, just for the uh, the, the weight of, of the, the coming uh projects uh and the fulfillment of ongoing ones right now, I, I would recommend we reappoint uh Scott Barkfried uh to that commission.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item seven is an appointment of one member to the zoning board of adjustments for a five-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
So this is where we get kind of hairy. So um correct me if I'm wrong here, but we had no applicants for this vacancy, correct?
Correct.
But we did have some uh applicants, more applicants than vacancies on some other boards and commissions and, and lucky for us, everybody we interviewed is extremely helpful and extremely eager to get involved. So they basically told us, you know, we'd be interested in, you know, helping any way we can. So um here, there's, there's a few names we can kick around, but um, you know, one I feel would be a, a pretty good fit. There's, there's a couple. One I would recommend for this one would be Dane Barner. Uh, I don't know what your, other guy's thoughts are. We like to fill that position with uh, Dane's a local music teacher, lived in the community. I forget how long he told me on, in his interview, but he's, he's been here long enough to, to, for him and his wife and his children to be rooted well, so. Um, and he's, again, another uh community member, really eager to get involved. Zoning Board of Adjustment also doesn't meet that often, you know, so, you know, a guy with a few kids, it might be a little bit better for schedule too, so.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, my motion would be to appoint Dane Barner.
Okay, well.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item eight is appointment of one member to the City Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term beginning June first and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is another one. We have an incumbent, Barb Wallen, who's already, is already serving, so.
And this is another one we have two for, right? But yeah, I think it's important that we get Barb back on. I, I think um she, I hope she doesn't mind me saying this, but she made a very, very good point in the interview that, you know, you, a board is important as a planning and zoning. It, it almost takes two to three to four years to really get your head around it. Really get the head around the scope and, and what, what you do on that board. And I think she finally feels very comfortable and, and she's adding input and helping that board navigate some of the, the challenges they tackle for us, so I, I would suggest reappointing Barb Wallen.
Matt, do you want a second?
I'll second.
Do you have your mic on?
Look at you.
Just to be clear.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Number nine.
All right, number nine, appointment of one member of the City Planning and Zoning Commission for four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um.
So this is the one we'd, we'd kind of need to find a spot, you know, um. One of the applicants was Dane Barner. We just, we just put him on the zoning board of adjustment. Uh, I'm op, I'm open to suggestions here. I know you made a good point. As someone you felt comfortable there before the meeting, you and I were talking, Jim, and I don't know, you, you have suggestion there?
Which one was that?
Uh, planning and zoning.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, well, I know which one it is, but um I don't know. I guess I thought the Jill would be more.
Yeah, great point. You know, Jill has a real estate background, um, another young.
Yeah, I think she would do good on that. I mean, she's got the background in real estate and some esoteric knowledge, we would hope.
Yeah, young member of the community, again, eager to get involved. We'd love to see that. Um, so yeah, I, I would support it if that's your motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll second.
This is Jill Burtonad.
Yes.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item ten is appointment of one member of city government to the Hotel Motel Tax Board for a four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um, and of course Andy Stowe is, or Sol, sorry, Andy Sol is our uh incumbent and he's reapplied. Thank you, Andy. So uh I would assume.
I'll move to appoint Andy.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item eleven is an appointment of one member to Webster City Hotels to the Hotel Motel Tax Board for a four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um, and Kyle Swan said he will serve, he would, he would like to step down, but we don't have anyone else standing for the, or anyone from the Hotel Motel Tax.
From the Hotel Motel community.
Community.
And, and people have asked me, and while we're on the topic, just because he's vocalized the fact that he'd like to step down eventually, so maybe to encourage others to step up for that, the community involves any owners or employees of the hotels? Do you know exactly what that specification is?
What it was, or board members or?
Is that what kind of falls on me? I just want to give an idea if they, if they fall in line with.
Affiliation with that hotel likely.
Motel or hotels.
Employees, I may have to check on that because that could be coming, you know. Well, and that could come and go. They could be there when they're appointed, but then leave.
Hmm.
You know.
It could change probably.
So maybe not employees, but I think owners, officers.
Yeah, it's always the shareholders.
Okay.
Holders, okay.
All right. So, I mean, well.
So Kyle will be.
Kyle.
He'll stay on.
Guys, so I, I'll, I'll move to appoint Kyle.
Kyle Swan.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Uh, item twelve is an appointment of one member of Public at Large to the Hotel Motel Tax Board for an unexpired term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-one.
One I was very impressed with amongst all the impressive candidates was Jamie Sizer. I'd like to recommend him for that uh first one, May thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, term expiring then.
I, I agree. Jamie's been a, a exemplary example, if that even makes sense. A great example of uh citizenship in Webster City since I was in Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. I remember him being actively involved. The fact that he's wanting to get involved in city government, uh, his son is actually on the youth advisory commission, I think it's great, so I'll uh enthusiastically second that one.
For the four-year term ending thirty-one, May twenty twenty.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same. Motion approved. Item thirteen is appointment of one, uh, one member of Public at Large to the Hotel Motel Tax Board for a four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
I would like to nominate Zachary Schumacher for that. I personally have known Zach. He's uh moved back in the community. He's a professional working in the quote swine industry. His wife works at the pharmacy. Young child, so I think Zach would do a very good job in it. Very enthusiastic when he interviewed, so I would nominate Zach for that.
He, I, I'd support that. You know, Zach is eager to get involved and uh I was very impressed with him as well. Um, if you think he's a good fit for the Hotel Motel, I'll support it, so I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item fourteen is appointment of one member to the Traffic Study Committee for a four-year term beginning June first of twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
So in this one, the one applicant that tried, you know, that wanted to go towards that, we just appointed to Hotel Motel, and I think he will be a great fit, Jim, if that's great. Um, but we do have a couple there that has applied for other boards and commissions that I would still like to see involved because they're, they're, they're great, um, new members of our community. And one of those is uh Kyle Heffernan. Local chiropractor, again, young, uh, young family, uh, just moved to the community, want to get involved. So I would, I would nominate Kyle Heffernan to that seat on the Traffic Study Committee.
I would second that. He came from a large city, been around, came back to Webster City because he's from the U-Grove area. So I would second Kyle Heffernan.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item fifteen is an appointment of one member to the Traffic Study Committee for a four-year term beginning June twenty, uh, June first twenty nineteen and ending May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
Uh, another young uh new member to our community, uh, Ryan Ripentrap. Uh, moved to town, I believe, a couple of years ago. Um, I've seen him out and about in the community at several events, uh, eager to get involved. Uh, so I'd like to see him, you know, donate his time to the Traffic Study Committee, so I'd, I'd nominate Ryan Ripentrap.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item sixteen is appointment of high school member to the Youth Advisory Commission for, for, for the term beginning June first twenty nineteen and ending June first twenty twenty.
So Anastasia Iverson is a current member on, on the Youth Advisory Commission. She's served a couple of years now um as a middle school representative and she'll be moving into the high school as a freshman, so I was crossing my fingers on this. I was hoping she'd want to stay involved. She's a great member. Great idea, is very enthusiastic and helpful. Um, I would like to nominate Anastasia for the uh high school seat.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved.
This would be a good time to mention that we do have um one other high school vacancy open as well as two middle school vacancies. It's really easy. All you gotta do is be a high schooler or a middle schooler and be available one night a month, which is really hard now with the youth. Which is a good thing, right? It means they're active, they're doing much stuff, but man, it's like herding cats. You get them together once a month, but um, if you know of a middle school or high school that'd be interested in, in helping the community out, we greatly appreciate it.
Item seventeen is a second reading on a proposed ordinance and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, Iowa nineteen ninety-six by adding chapter one seventy-four pertaining to small wireless facility antenna tower right-of-way sightings. Call for a motion.
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Uh, would you like to waive the third reading?
There's nothing controversial or nothing on this one, right, Zach?
All of it that you guys already adopted, it's just how in order.
And basically it's kind of a broader brush, right? We're kind of moving with change at a higher level, right? Yeah, I'm, I'll move to, to waive the third reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
I'll move to pass and adopt.
Okay.
Second. Just a second. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We have a new ordinance. Um, eighteen, second reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance adopting and enacting a city, new city code for the city of Webster City, Iowa as the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, Iowa nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen. I'll call for a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Same thing here, we can waive the third.
Same thing.
I would like you to do that.
I think we all would.
Right, right. I'd, I'd motion it.
We're kind of in a weird limbo right now of what code we're applying, so let's.
When we make changes and stuff.
I'll, I'll move to waive the third reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
I'll move to pass and adopt.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Another ordinance there.
Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports?
Uh, I'd just let you know that the Youth Advisory Commission has pushed back their second annual Frisbee Golf Tournament to June twenty-second. Reason being is, you know, they, they want to um kind of move forward with the new nine holes at the Frisbee Golf Course. Not guaranteeing they're going to be in by then, but just give us more time for planning. Um, that's also the day we're, we're planning around some uh city manager candidates. Um, so I might not be there, but. So I might not be there, but I know the Frisbee Golf Tournament will be in good hands with the, the youth running it, but just let everyone know, it's no longer next weekend, it's the twenty-second.
We should have had the city clean up that weekend, too. They would have got more help from the.
Yeah, the candidates.
Potential.
See how you're there to get their hands dirty.
They are good there.
Yeah, see if they're good at delegating or jumping in.
Yeah, jumping in. All right, any other items to come to counsel? I guess, Zach, what about your report?
Okay, so this junk vehicle thing, we've kind of hit the ball, or kind of hit the ground running on that one. I think so far, on the first pass-through that we did with junk vehicles, I think we towed seven, seven vehicles, I think, in the first week that were junk. And some of those were reclaimed from the, from the tow yard, but others were not. And then we've also, I know Tony Jones and his family brought up their issues and we met with them last week. And I think they have a better understanding now exactly what they can and can't have and what they can do on their property to help alleviate some of those situations. So they told us they'll be cleaning it up, getting rid of the firewood, getting rid of the trailer within the timeframe, so I hope. And in the future, they know that they, they can, you know, put an addition on the building or they can put up a shed or they can do other things in order to help keep the property cleaned up for what they need it for. So that was a good one. The development agreement we've already talked about, actually tonight with that Kenyatta Ridge, we've transferred that or signed that over to the bank so that the bank is using it as collateral. So again, that's another reason why we're pretty confident that the road will get done because the bank will be climbing on them as well, so not just us. And the last one's kind of unique in that Carol actually brought this up, that when we've been taking these abandoned properties, the county has been making us pay the back taxes on them. And we've now challenged that with the county that actually says that, and this wasn't one of our court orders even, that we're not to pay the back taxes, we're not responsible for them. So it's been kind of a back and forth with the county, but this last one's like a sixteen hundred dollar tax bill. And it's, we cannot be responsible for paying somebody's back taxes when we take these properties for good. So I think we're going to get it figured out. I'm hopeful that we're going to get it figured out. I've been to the treasurer's office and the auditor's office and you name it. But I think we're hopefully on the right track so that we can stop that issue going forward, so.[1758.57]